Uh, Mr. Alan Jenkins, if you don't mind, I'll let you lead us in invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity here today, Lord. We pray, ask that our decisions draw honor and glory to you, that we draw honor and glory to you in this county that we call home, Newberry County. Lord bless our meeting, clear our minds, allow us to focus on the business at hand. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
All right. And for those watching from home, starting on my far right, we have Commissioner Tom Crowe, then Mr. Jack Shields, and new Commissioner Ms. Lisa Tolan, welcome aboard, then Mr. Alan Jenkins. To my far left is Mr. Mike Metz, then Mr. Daniel Bowlen, and I myself, and Tyler Johnson. Okay, so I'll give everyone a few minutes. We'll look over the updated minutes that are at your place. And when you're all ready, I'll take a motion.
Make the motion we approve.
I hear a motion. Get a second from Ms. Tolan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, on to our new business case presentation. Item A, text amendment buffer and open space requirements in Chapter 153 of the Code of Ordinances of Newberry County.
And I'm just gonna do it from here since we don't have any zoning change or rezonings tonight.
Okay.
All right, so the letter A is text amendments. We've got some in buffer, open space, and in the planned development district. So what this is, is just cleaning up and making some changes to match other items that we have, are hopefully gonna be adopting here soon. So the first one is the planned development district. So since the RMPD mirrors a planned development district, one thing that we changed in the RMPD is that any changes, no matter small, big, so we didn't have to try to figure out, well, what's small and what's big. We just put everything had to come to you all and then county council. So we decided that any changes to a planned development would follow the same. They go to county, to you all and the county council, no matter what the change is. So that was number 12, and I'd skip number seven. We added delineated in front of floodplains. So that just clears that up just a little bit more. And then skipping over to existing vegetation, 153, 181, anything in green, and I reprinted this for y'all because I noticed when I made the copies of the original packet, the colors didn't come through and it was very hard to see what was added and changed. So in the, on your, in front of you is a new copy that shows really clear the red and the green. So for existing vegetation, all of this was, was added. And it just gives more of a clear defined definition of what we're looking for. So for existing vegetation, you've got, these show apply to all residential, single-family attached, multifamily, a major subdivision, manufactured home parks, and non-residential developments. And then you have the exceptions of the following activities so that these could be done within those that would not affect the existing vegetation. One of the major additions to this ordinance is land clearing. So at one of the council meetings, it was brought up that, you know, in, we wanna maintain buffers. Well, what if, if the seller knows they're fixing to sell this property and they want the tree, tree money, and they clearcut it and don't leave the buffer, well, now you've got, you know, you gotta go back and replant all the buffer. So a mitigation to that issue was putting in here a tree survey in, for land clearing. So letter B just states that no tract of land greater than five acres in size shall be clear cut before a tree survey is conducted per the requirements of 153, 181C. And before, everybody's like, well, hey, what about, you know, those guys that are doing timber cropping as of? That's an exception that we'll get to. So this is mainly, there is an exception for that. But if you don't meet one of the exemptions, then you would have to provide a tree survey. And it's a, would be conducted by an ISA certified ardentist, landscape architect, or urban forester. And they would basically identify the location of all significant trees. It'd include the size, the species, the general condition of each significant tree. And then it'd tell you what you can plant back and things like that. It would include maintenance, this ordinance includes maintenance and replacement of those significant trees. So if they are removed, you are required to put those back. And then you've got the exemptions I was talking about, that any forestry activity on forest land that meets one of the following requirements would be exempt, and it lists those. For the purpose of this exemption, forestry activity includes but not limited to timber harvesting, site preparation, control burning, things like that. And it also goes into upon completion of a timber harvest involving a clear cut, that removes approximately eighty percent or more of the existing trees that I would have the ability and would deny permits request for that parcel. So this is just to try to protect, in the event that they're going to sell it to a developer, to try to protect some of the vegetation in the buffer areas.
That, I mean, I, this is only planned development districts. I mean, this can't have anything that affects, you know, our normal forestry activities. I know I see these exemptions, but that don't need to slip into.
I can make a note that that's clear.
Yeah, that this applies. And I guess the only thing too, period of sixty months. I mean, if I'm conducting my normal forestry activities and under clear cutting or thinning or whatever, and for some reason after I do that, knock but knocks to me, somebody comes to me and offer me life-changing money. I gotta wait five years to?
That's, that's.
I think that's generous, actually.
What?
Yeah, I'd like to see it longer because it defeats the purpose of our buffers.
Well, I mean, I.
Cause you know, when you clear cut, your first year, you're gonna spray it. So you're not gonna replant to the, the end of the first year, beginning of the second year. So you're looking at, all right, at five years, you're looking at a three to four-year-old planted buffer. That's not gonna create much of a buffer for, I mean, what we're, I understand you're wanting to maximize the profit off of your property. We're looking at, how can Newberry County control growth in the county? And the buffers was a big thing for it, and I mean, this kinda defeats the purpose of the buffers and we allow them to clear cut it and stuff. Now, it, under a normal, if they purchase a property that's timbered, you know, it wouldn't be anything. They'd leave the buffer alone and conduct, conduct the cutting inside the buffer and stuff, and it'd be no problem. But I just see where, you know.
Well, what about if they buy your open pasture land? Is it no buffer, the grass, ten-inch grass?
I think the buffer would have to be planted.
The same sort of thing. What's the buff, what you define a buffer as?
I mean, that's, we're gonna get to the buffer.
Hundred-foot of your pasture land, I guess.
You, they, if you, if a developer bought a, a open area, they would have to plant the width of buffering with the allowed buffering species that's listed in.
But I think there should be a timeframe on that also. I mean, cause, I mean, that's what I'm just looking at, cause I kinda agree with Mike. You're, you're gonna handcuff one on the other, but both of them are circumventing the buffer.
Well, if somebody's, you know, conducting their normal stuff, now if there was a planned purchase of something and all that was in the works is one thing.
Yeah.
But why should I be penalized five years for something that I was done to my normal operation under the right to practice forestry? And somebody comes and does something, why should I have to wait five years to sell that? Now, they'd have to reestablish the buffer, but I don't, I don't agree with telling me I can't, I can't re.
There's nothing that keeps you from selling it. It's just they can't begin development until that time period's up.
Well, but you penalizing me or them five years to be able to do that when, you know, I wasn't planning on doing that, but it's a, I mean, like yours with the grass, they'd have to plant your buffer. Why can't they plant the thing back, you know, if it's something that, that I'm, I didn't?
I'm for having that the, the planting has to be established. I mean, I'm not.
If you, if you had a sale coming on you but intending on cutting it, but if I was.
Yeah.
Normal operation, I don't think it should be a five-year wait till somebody can even buy the property for you. It's not that I'm planning on selling it, but that's not, that's, that's just not a penalty. I don't think should be applied to that piece of property. Five years you gotta wait and sell it for something like this, but.
Well, I think.
They could reestablish the buffer and all that kinda thing.
Yeah, that, that example, I think, is viable. What they're trying to do with this is to keep someone from going in once they've made prior contact with the developers and stuff, going in and clearing everything to circumvent the buffer.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah.
If it's a pending sale or something like that.
Yeah, I'll get with Jeff and see if, and come up with some.
I'm conducting my normal stuff.
Some wording to clear.
Yeah, we should be able to distinguish.
Yeah.
Distinguish between the two, if it's a pending sale or some kinda coercion kinda thing. I know that has happened. And sometimes the trees are worth more on the dirt than off the dirt. Well, I, I got no doubt in that. We actually sold a piece in Richland County and my sister was wanting to cut the timber. I said, man, them trees are worth more down there than it was if we took them off, and they finally convinced them. And I understand that. But if I'm, my normal practices and some.
Oh, yeah.
God off reason come, I need to sell it or something. I don't think it should be a five-year moratorium on that. I think it'd be structured.
Is there an alternative? I mean, if, if you cut the trees down, you got flat land, or if you got pasture. So what you're saying is, in order to build, they have to have five years of growth before, in the buffer zone, before they can do anything.
Well, that's, that's what this currently has, but it doesn't, I mean, like I was saying with normal timber practices, basically the way this is written is if the developer comes to us at year five, you know, we have no say prior to that, and that's why I'm saying, cause you're looking at probably only three to four years max growth with your traditional planting. So you'd be zero growth, like he said, on, on a pasture land, so.
Well, what, could you, if they wanna put a berm on, or could they do some type of, of, you know, fence barrier or something to kinda expedite and not lose five years?
That's something we could look at, isn't it?
But if it's open land and they.
Yeah.
Plant the pasture back, they can start before five years, I reckon.
Yeah.
Long as we establish the buffer. You know, I, I think if it's something, you trying to circumvent the rule is one thing.
Yeah.
You got somebody's normal practices and then you gonna stop him from doing something for five years cause he cut his trees and, by the way, somebody came to and offered him, cause I've got some prices lately. I don't know why the heck I'm planting trees back, to be honest with you. And I'm not gonna sell it, but I've had a couple of offers that, and I'm planting the trees back, like, what the heck am I doing this for? I never get the tree growth back out of it, but I don't want, and I don't want that for anybody. I, I, you know, I'm a private property rights person, and hopefully we put enough in here to keep. Anybody else from coming, to be honest with you, but there again, you don't need, if some, I had to sell it or something, I don't need a five-year moratorium.
Yeah.
On doing that, or anybody else, pasture land, open land, it just be.
Cause I mean, you, normal sale land's probably gonna be about a year to get all the contracts and up work with the developer, cause they're gonna, so you're. So, yeah, that's, I guess, that'd be something to be readdressed about how they want to look at that.
Yeah.
Cause I, I understand both.
Side, that's right.
Sides of that conversation completely. And then I do agree with Mike that, you know, on pasture land, there needs to be some stipulation that, that the buffer has to be established first, before they can start their development and stuff. Because, I mean, I think the whole purpose of the buffer is to mitigate impact on neighboring landowners. So if we let them start the buffer with bare dirt, you're looking at, I mean, you're the, the tree expert in the room, Mike, what, probably seven or eight years before line of sites even?
Well, it's what you plant, but then again.
Yeah.
Then once they get so big, you see through them, so it's kinda like that buffer. Unless you put a berm or a fence or something, you gonna see through them anyway. Mine, most of mine I burn and I won't see forty acres of, you know, wide open. So if you're doing proper forest management, it's gonna be kinda open under it.
Yeah.
That's better habitat for the deer and turkeys. That, it's hard to call what a buffer is, an area between two. But far as seeing through it and putting a definition, that's gonna be hard to do on anything.
Any other suggestions, additions to the existing vegetation?
The fourth line down under section C.
Mm-hmm.
Has DBH in front of it.
Which line was that?
The fourth line down, basically in the middle of the sentence.
On what page?
C.
C under the second page.
The survey shall include the.
The survey, DBH is diameter at breast height.
Yeah.
That's what that stands for. And the most times you hear six or eight inches or something like that, do we have a? Yeah, DBH, the diameter of breast height.
We probably need to put that in definitions. Okay.
Is that in definition or something?
It's gonna need to be added.
Okay.
Anything else under vegetation? All right, moving on over to buffers.
Just one more.
Okay.
We do have in there no invasives.
Uh, yes, it is, it, we put, it, it was already in the existing, I believe.
Okay.
Um, and this was just what we added, but I will fair, I'm more than positive, but I will make sure of that.
All right.
All right, so under buffers, letter E, the only thing we added was a buffer may not be used for passive recreation. And that came from the discussions that we had for the RMPD and the planned development. The next change is under the required buffer width. So for the RMPD, we put in there that they, you would have to maintain a hundred-foot buffer. And the feedback from council was that they really liked that, and why would, you know, why couldn't we have that for any development, not just an RMPD? So that's what this change is doing is now, any development that is located next to an R2-zoned property would have to meet those hundred-foot setbacks. And so it, it just, it, it beefs up that buffering for any development that is within, near the, an R2 zoning district. And even it, it buff, it adds in the manufactured home park, industrial, or commercial property. So if any of these zoning uses come to play next to R2, then they have to meet the hundred-foot buffer. And that just in letter three explains that a perimeter buffer of a hundred feet shall be established along the perimeter of a development site, along all road frontage. The perimeter buffer area shall be an undisturbed natural area preserved prior to construction permitting. Additional planning may be required by the zoning administrator to fill in areas as necessary to form a continuous buffer. The buffer area shall be identified as perimeter buffer and maintained by the homeowners association or, or a property manager association. And then the area within the buffer shall not be considered an overall open space calculation. So you cannot use the land in the buffer for your open space calculation. And a lot of that we talked about in the RMPD, so we're just trying to make it conform to any development. Letter K landscaping, landscaping and buffer shall adhere to the requirements in 153, 184. And letter, section D, and this is, this, I knew it was somewhere. The list shall not include plant species identified as invasive. So we've got that covered. We did in landscaping add requirements for entranceway enhancements. We did not have that in our current ordinance, and we felt like we needed to address entranceways with the signage and landscaping and walls and fencing with, within the entranceway and lighting. So if y'all want me to go through those, we can, or if everybody's good with them, we'll move on.
One question I know we've had before with the buffers, I don't know if it's covered under landscaping exactly. Is the fact of diseased trees, dead trees, we do have it in here that they can be?
They have to be removed and replaced.
Okay. So that's.
Kevin, my question was about the site triangle. What does that mean?
So your site triangle is when you're coming out of like a development, you've got to maintain that site triangle for site distance to see left and right down the road. So your buffer has to meet a requirement for a site triangle. So you, you're gonna have some right there at your entrances back a little bit because you DOT, if, if, and usually a development will be on a DOT road, but even if it's on a county maintained road, you still gotta meet those site distances.
Should it be S I G H D, S I T E?
Where we?
No, it's S I G H T.
Yeah, it's under bullet point four, four, four of the third sentence in the middle.
Then a site triangle, S I T E.
Okay, yep. Yep. Yep, all right. Anything else under entranceways? So for open space, this is mainly just some housekeeping, taking out cluster and adding master planned districts. And then it used to be that required buffers may be included in open space. So we took that out to clean that up. And then we also put our ratio of fifteen percent to match what we put into RMPD cause we did not have a percentage located. And then for letter F, we took out, or, I'm sorry, we took out G, open space area set aside and residential cluster developments may be used for onsite treatment. So to get that out of, anything related to cluster, getting it out of the ordinance.
That open space twenty-five percent last time?
It was fifteen.
It was fifteen?
Mm-hmm. Yep. The only definition that we identified was a tree significant, but I will add the DBH.
Yeah.
For clarification on that.
Since it's used in definitions also.
Yep, yep, yep. All right, any questions on any of the text changes? If not, we'll need a motion to either bring it back next month with some of the suggested changes, comments that we had mainly in the vegetation, or you can send it to council with, once I discuss it with administration, however.
I mean, in order to get this through before the moratorium is lifted, we have to send it to council.
If, if the moratorium is gonna be lifted by the end of the year, yep.
Yep. So if anything, if, if we kick this down the road, we're.
The moratorium will be.
This wouldn't be included.
It wouldn't be included, no, not, not, I mean, it would.
It would basically, once it finished third and final reading.
It would go into effect.
It would go into effect then, but it would not be under the moratorium.
That's right.
And I'll leave that up to the rest of the commission, but I think, I hate to do it that way, but in order to get it done, by the time the moratorium is lifted, we do need to send it on to council.
They don't wanna extend the moratorium?
I don't know that we can.
I, I don't have any, I, I don't know the regulations.
We can't, that would be a council question, a council and Jeff. But.
I'm good either way. Y'all tell me what you, you as a board just want to do as a whole.
Yeah.
So it'd be sending it with the changes in that.
But we don't know what the change is.
Yeah, I mean, it would be, I would discuss these changes with Jeff, you know, for clarifying.
But if there were adjustments, I mean, could he do it, you know, if there were?
I mean, we can always.
We could get back in if it was all good.
I mean, we can always, if we don't like it, then we can, after the moratorium, go back and change it.
Yep, it would be just an easy text amendment.
Yeah, but in order to get it done, but I mean, there's eight of us here. So we'll need a consensus.
All right, wants, somebody wanna make a motion to?
I'll make a motion we approve.
Approve with suggested changes, yep.
Changes.
My second.
All right. All those in favor? All right. Those against, motion passes unanimously.
Okay, all right. Letter B is the creation of uniform requirements for execution of a development agreement under the South Carolina Local Government Development Agreement Act. And I'm not gonna go through this, but I found this to be pretty interesting. I printed off the actual South Carolina Agreement Act regulations, and this is what a county municipality has to follow when adopting our own. So we're, again, we're not gonna go through this, but I thought that was pretty, it, it was very informative of what you can and can't do. But what I will, I did a bullet point kind of understanding a development agreement act. So there's two acts in South Carolina. You have the Development Agreement Act, and you have the Impact Fee Act. Similar in some ways, but very different in others. And as a county, right, staff right now, we feel like the development agreement is a much better approach for our county versus impact fees. Impact fees have significant regulations that go with them on what you can spend it, where you spend it. And if you don't meet those regulations in a certain timeframe, you actually have to write a check back to the developer. So after a lot of discussion, we felt like a agreement, a development agreement act is a, a better route. So kind of the purpose and intent of, of the Development Agreement Act, it was created to promote certainty in land development approvals, prevent wasted resources, and encourage comprehensive planning. It allows developers and local governments to kinda lock in the laws and regulations that apply to a project, giving both sides more ability basically to give and take. And then we'll talk about term sizes within the agreement that we've drafted, but it kinda breaks down twenty-five to two-hundred-and-fifty acres, the agreement would be up to five years, and so, such forth. And then some of the contents in the agreement, development agreement is legal description, permitted uses, densities, description of required public facilities, who would provide them, and any kind of permits that would have to be pulled. Any, it has to be consistent with the local comprehensive plan, so it's got to match what that future land use map is. So it's just a, basically a good planning tool that provides certainty and stability for large-scale developments while then protecting public interest through transparency and oversight. So it is, it is a way to gain resources for possibly needed infrastructure that that development will put on that area, but not have those same, I guess, bonding requirements that impact fees do. So you have the draft adopting ordinance in front of you, but what we will discuss is the actual requirements of a development agreement, and that's exhibit A. So a legal descrip, so this is what would be turned in for the agreement. An agreement actually will go through county council for three readings, and it will have a public hearing involved. So the public will be involved in any, they can come in and, and speak. They can come in and and speak on what they wanna see, what they don't wanna see throughout this process. And before we talk about what's required, we have like a little flow chart of when it will occur. So if a developer comes in and they wanna rezone the property, it's R two rule. They can make their development work in the RS zoning district. They go before you all and then county council and county council blesses their rezoning to RS. Then they would follow the procedure here on the left, on the, yeah, on the left. So they'd go through their their zoning map amendment. They get the approval to to rezone the property, then they go to sketch plan review. It will go to the land review committee that's fire, police, all that good stuff. And then it will come to you all for approval. That the land review committee is prior to coming to y'all. Because if if E nine one one says, hey, that something is, you know, something with the road or. Yeah, or it doesn't, whatever. Any feedback that comes from that review committee will have to be addressed and cleared up before it comes to you all. So when it comes to you all, the electric company, water, sewer, all that's been notified and they're good with sketch. Now, sketch is very vague, I mean, it's it's sketch, but it gives you enough information to know whether it will or will not work to the basics. So once it's gone through the review committee and then to you all for sketch plat, that is when the development agreement process starts. Because once we start going through the requirements, it's gonna take some time and it's gonna take some money. So a developer, if they know they're not gonna make it past sketch plat, they're not gonna put the money into what this agreement's gonna cost a developer to to actually produce. So once the degree, the Development Agreement Act is approved by county council, then they can start on their preliminary plat construction plans where they actually have, you know, the construction plans for the roads, for the infrastructure, all that good stuff. So it is between, for you all, it will happen between your approval of sketch and before they move on to preliminary plat.
But my understanding is, I could be wrong. After they get the development agreement process, because they've already got the sketch. They can go ahead and start rough construction, correct?
They can start rough construction after y'all approve preliminary. They cannot start any rough construction until preliminary is approved.
Okay, so sketch plan doesn't approve anything.
No, no, and so they may, they can, they may start on on what we call clearing, like stormwater, stuff like that. Because stormwater plan can be submitted along with sketch, cause that's.
Yeah, that that's what I was talking about.
They can start that, but they cannot start putting any any infrastructure in until after preliminary and construction's been approved.
How does this affect the R M P Ds? Because with the R M P Ds, we had it where they had to bring everything up front.
Yep, so if you see on the right hand side, that's for your R M P D. And so because they don't have to go through a rezoning, they will, they will have to mirror the the R M P D zoning package that they bring to y'all to decide if they're gonna rezone will basically be at the same time as the development agreement.
But they would have already gotten sketch.
That's, that's, that's alright.
Because then they would have already gotten sketch approval.
That's, that should, no, this, those, that's, yeah, that's an error, that's not right.
Yeah, cause the R M P D, they should have to bring everything to us at sketch plan level, correct?
Yes, all of that'd be basically at one, one time.
Alright, that's what I was thinking. And so the one on the right is R M P D, the one on the left would be the the current subdivisions.
Yeah, and I mean, and they may, maybe it's a track like Mongo where it was zoned for what they wanted. Yep, and they didn't have to go through the rezoning, then they would, you just would, they, of course, they wouldn't go through a zoning ma- map amendment. They'd start at sketch, yep.
So that would be the right hand side minus the R M P D section.
So what a developer would have to provide for a development agreement? And we'll just run through all the requirements. Requirement A, a legal description of the property subject to the agreement and the names of the properties legal and and legal and adequate owners. Letter B, the duration of the agreement, which must comply with section six dash thirty dash forty of the act. And that's part of that on the understanding the Development Agreement Act number three. That's where those numbers come from. So traditionally, in our area, you're gonna be looking at the five years. Cause I don't foresee us having a development over two hundred and fifty acres. But if we do, then it would go up to ten years. A representation by the developer of the number of acres of highland contained in the property subject to the agreement. And what highland is, is any land that's above the flood, the hundred year flood zone. Exhibit A, which is behind the drafted ordinance for adopting requirements of the South Carolina legal government. This was just in your regular packet.
Oh, okay, I've been looking at the new pack.
It's page five, the first four pages are just what will be used to adopt the ordinance. Everybody on that, follow me on that page now? So again, they would have to let us know how many acres of highland is contained in the property subject to the agreement. The then current zoning of the property and a statement if applicable of any proposed rezoning, which at this point, it would already be rezoned to what they need. The development uses would be permitted on the property pursuant to the agreement, including population density, building intensities and heights. So they would have to show the density and and make sure, and we would verify that it makes sure, that it meets the requirements of our zoning ordinance or the R M P D. A description of public facilities that will service the development, including who provides the facilities, the date. And there should be an of in there, the date of any new facilities if needed that will be constructed, a schedule. If they, if public facilities have to be added, a schedule of when and how they will be added. And then a description where appropriate of any reservation or dedication of land for for public purposes and provisions to protect environmentally sensitive property as may be required or pursuant to laws in effect at the time of entering into the agreement. It will require, require a description of all local development permits approved or needed to be approved for the development. So that would be stormwater, any, any other permits that may be needed. Stormwater, all the county permits and anything that else. It will, a finding that the development permitted or proposed is consistent or will be consistent by the time of the execution of the agreement within, that is within the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance and any land development regulations. So it would have to meet all of the new L D R, all of the new road ordinance that we changed, chapter ninety-one and any other parts of the zoning ordinance. And then a description where appropriate for any provisions for the preservation and restoration of historic structures if there is any on that property. A development schedule including commencement dates and interim completion dates at no greater than the five year intervals. If one or more local government has made party to the agreement, a provision stating which local government is responsible, which should, and where we are should typically only be one. A listing of the laws and land development regulations that will apply to the development. A provision consistent with section six thirty-one dash eighty of the act, which is the act that I provided to you all addressing the circumstances under which laws and land development regulations adopted after the execution of the agreement apply to the property subject to the agreement. They've got to provide a provision stating whether the agreement continues to apply to the property or portions of it that are annexed into a municipality, which I don't think we'll run into that here in our area. A provision relating to the amendment, cancellation, modification or suspension of the agreement. A provision for periodic review to make sure they are consistent with the provisions of the act. A provision addressing the effects of material breach of the agreement. A provision that the developer within fourteen days after the county executes the agreement will record the agreement with the clerk of court for Newberry County. The provision that burdens of the act are binding on and the benefits of the act shall ensure the county and the developer. It must, a provision addressing the conditions and procedures by which the agreement may be assigned if applicable. And then letter V is the part where we can impose the fee. So it's to lessen the burden and impact on county services. The developer of such project shall pay a proportionate development fee to Newberry County. Newberry County Council determines the anticipated fee to conform to proper spendings of such revenue as approved by Newberry County Council. They, the fees will be within the uniform fee schedule of the physical year. So that every year that fee can be addressed, depending if it needs to go up on what our economy is looking like at the time. So there will not be a number listed in the ordinance, but it will be listed within the fee schedule so that it can be addressed every year.
How's that calculated?
So there is a formula and Jeff was planning to be here tonight to go over all this. But had something come up, so I'm kinda winging it. But anyway, it's a formula and right now, that formula, if if we were imposing this fee on someone today, the number comes to about twenty-five hundred to five thousand per unit. So anywhere in that money range per per house would be what we would impose. And it could be, that money could be spent, let's say, the school, the school district, cause they, that's always a a problem. Comes back and says, well, you know, we would have to add three more classrooms at Prosperity Riker. You know, that fee could possibly purchase a portable or what, you know, that's just an example, that's. But it, those fees would have a chance to offset maybe some of the issues that it would create. And that's what it's for.
That's why I didn't see anything here at all about schools. Assessing the.
Yeah, and they, the schools will come in.
Under the land development review board.
Under the review board, they've been added to that, yep.
And will they have a somewhat of a seat at the table and us helping with assessing that fee?
Yes. There, like I said, there's a formula, but I I don't know what all goes into that formula.
Through the work session they had last week where they discussed it and it was Jeff had figured back some amount of time and looked at all the county costs and stuff and divided that by the existing taxpayers and kind of came up that that's what it costs per household. And that was the way it was presented at that work session.
More significant impact will be what it does to the school and it may be a localized impact.
Well, and that's why.
Be a general impact if they all locate in Prosperity Rikers area. So I guess that's just, it may not be.
Right.
It may be more of a localized impact, particularly related to the schools if they came out. As long as they got a seat at the table.
They do.
Have some input in, I know some of these fee in lieu of taxes, school district doesn't have any say in it at all, so.
I personally feel that the twenty-five hundred to five is awful low for what it would cost for the for the infrastructure upgrades through our county, because we're pretty much tapped out on county resources. And I mean, and like Mike said, the schools are kind of reached it there. Cause I know I have daughters in the school district and I've reached out to them and asked. And I know they, they only have a limited room currently. But so this would, that fee would be determined every year. Well, we determine it initially, but then every year when the budget review is done, then they would readdress this.
So Jeff and I talked this afternoon and what we feel like what we'll do is if this goes to county council for adoption, that a number will be adopted at the time and it will say until July the, or June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. And so when the new budget rolls out July first of twenty twenty-six, if that number needed to be adjusted. We can, but we have a number adopted to, instead of doing a budget change, we have it in the ordinance.
And that fee is every year for the developers?
No, it's just, it's a one time fee.
Is that upfront or when does that?
It would be upfront.
Okay, that was one of my questions.
Kinda like Ms. Tyler just said, two, twenty-five hundred to five thousand sound low, it's a one time deal.
Well, I mean, you you, you think our county just purchased a fire engine this year for a million dollars? How many houses at twenty-five hundred for another fire engine, you know?
It, since it is a one time, it seems like, you know, five years, right? You know, it's, if you do, if you do the math like we're talking about.
That number, that number's gonna have to be increased.
Bucks and it's, it's a one time charge, I mean, it should at least have some multiple, I would think, if that is the math.
Yeah, I don't mean, that was the way it was presented during the work session. I do, from my limited research on this, there is there's no hard cap, but there's a stipulation that says it can't exceed what's spent on the infrastructure upgrades. But in the position that Newberry County's in, the infrastructure upgrades are everywhere. So I don't think we would have any issues.
Justifying the fee, wouldn't have any, justifying.
Yeah, we wouldn't have any problem justifying the fee from the infrastructure upgrades that would be necessary. And that'd be fire, school, because, I mean.
That's the bigger.
Financial than.
Unless you go, you know, we've tried to, in the county, stay away from portables and don't wanna do that again. And been a great effort and we're actually paying for it under that fee in lieu type thing we have. So I don't wanna go back to building a whole lot of buildings, it's not a fire truck at one million, it's a school at fifty million or whatever. But I I I do like the development agreement a whole lot.
Yeah, because it it gives the county leeway to determine where the, where the greatest infrastructure need is and direct the funds there where the impact fee has to be centralized from the get go. So this, this does do a good job of giving the county options. But it needs to be more.
I I think to your point too, I mean, it is globalized, but what's prosperity versus, you know, someplace else? I mean, the school need may be more and how do you, how do you identify really how is, well, how, how am I gonna be?
Where's that breaking point? I think, I I like this approach better and like I said, much every make it is a, it's whatever, whatever we can justify with schools, where where it's located maybe.
For future expenditures or projected.
I don't, I don't think. I think with the, with the county's needs and, and I mean, that does, because my question going to this would be, we need to make sure that this money doesn't go to the utilities. Because they are independents, so they should have to, you know, work their own agreements with the developers. You know, water, sewer, electricity, these, these developmental fees need to go to stuff that's for the existing taxpayers. And take the burden off of their back and not, you know, put it where it's rightfully deserved on the developers and those coming here. Well, it it would be, you know, it'd be, cause another one that we really don't talk about a lot, solid waste collection. We talked about it during the comprehensive plan, but I don't think it's really been. We talked about it during the comprehensive plan, but I don't think it's really been mentioned. You've got the big infrastructures or cop- or solid waste collection, fire, EMSU, well, that'd be EMS. So sheriff's office and school district, those would be the ones that would kinda fall under, they can, and uh bridges and roads. We, we've, we've driven these roads and we know that they need their fair share of attention also. Alright, so i- is that all on this? We just needed to go ahead. Do we need to give an amount or that's something that?
I mean, y'all can do a suggestion amount, I don't, I mean, it will be up to council.
I mean, I just, when I hear twenty-five and five, I'm thinking that's way low. I mean, we can make the suggestion that it be considered higher and just leave it at that. Or if anyone wants to throw a number out there, I don't, we don't have the information, I think, that would be prudent to, to calculate a number tonight.
Limited by the, this anyway, you got the, we can't say fifty thousand dollars and we got nothing to hang a hat on. It's got to be justified on. Form, some fo- form is pretty much already laid out, so me may think a number, but I may not.
Well, it's, it's not as much on the, it's, it can't cost more than infrastructure upgrades is how it's worded.
That's right, so we, we don't know what that is.
Yeah, and tha- and that's why it kinda, I would rather see it where it could be a project by project. But unfortunately, the state doesn't give us that option, you know, they, they wanna make.
Does it have to be countywide or like you said, it could be, if it's put there, the impact is a heck of a lot worse than if it's put here.
Well, it seems like proportionate.
Yeah.
It's kind of correct, I mean.
Well. You can create those districts, but I don't think we want to create those districts. I think best way would be make it a countywide thing, cause I mean, we do recognize here tonight. That there are different areas and I think that would be in when looking at these projects for. When reviewing approval, that's where that would come into effect, correct Katie? Kinda? If we got in an area that it just, the, it isn't feasible in the long term for the county, that would be. Where we could just say no to those rather than. Get, making a poor business decision and losing money.
Yeah, there's gotta be some kind of multiple, I mean, if you, it's gotta be, it's gotta some kind of future. I mean, it's future development, so what, you know.
I mean. Any, a future school, a future road, a future. Anything's gonna be expensive. Well, I mean, let's see, we've still got three years before the comprehensive plan's reviewed.
Will the uniform fee schedule come through us too? Like, that's actually the doubt.
That goes to council and the budget. But uh, we could make recommendations for, recommendations for changes to the fee schedule. But we don't actually get the approval on it. I di- I just thi- I think if. For tonight, we should just agree that the, the number needs to be significantly looked at and raised. And just leave it at that.
Yeah, I think we might look at the formula and review that and make some recommendations.
Yeah. Alright, I will take motion.
No. Motion edit, move forward.
Alright, do I hear a second, second from Mrs. Tola? All those in favor that this motion be moved to council? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thought we will get the.
That would be, we would, down the road. Because that's kinda, this goes into the same boat as the previous discussed thing is, in order to get it done by the deadline. We have to pass it on, but we can readdress it at a future time. What we can do is just get, once council discusses it, we can bring it back and we can openly discuss it. And if we see changes that need to be made, we can make those recommendations. We don't have to ask them to send it back, we can just sit, no, they don't have to listen to us, but we can make the recommendations.
Will they send a, they will send a copy of the calculation of how they.
I'll get Jeff to send us that, I can email it to y'all.
And again, the expectation needs to be multiple years, it can't just be one time. I mean, if it is a one-timer, it's gotta be based on about a multiple year.
Well, so it, it'll have to be a one-time, there's.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you know, make it the twenty-five hundred or whatever times five or whatever five years for the development of.
Because the state actually governs the counties on these and that's why we have to do it.
But once all the units are built, then they're paying property taxes.
Yes.
So there's gonna be, you know, some kind of a balance um.
And, and we have buildings that we could recommend, I mean, and this is just down the road for next year. We can recommend, that's something that's covered under the fee schedule is your ha- building permit cost. And Katie's got a whole bunch of permit cost and all this, they have to go through in her office and stuff. Alright, on to letter C.
Okay, letter C is gonna be our easy one for tonight. Letter C is a text amendment in reference to fencing. Um, so it'd be just some minor little text um additions. So uh staff would like to um put it in the ordinance that fences are not. Um, do not have to meet setbacks. Um, it's always been interpreted that they don't, but we want it in black and white now. Um, so we're just wanting to add um under section one fifty-three point zero three three fences and walls. We wanna add a number six that says fences shall be allowed to be placed within the required setbacks to include the setback from the lakeshore. Um, the next addition would be um referencing the uh change in the actual ordinance. For setback from the lakeshore, which is one fifty-three, one sixty-eight. Um, just putting a note in there that fences are not required to meet that lake setback. And then um under definitions, we would like to take fence out of um the definition of structure. Just to clarify that going forward.
Alright, if we're not gonna allow them in the setback, do we need to say that they cannot be immediately on the property line?
So we, I mean, technically they can, when people call us, we suggest them come in six inches. Yeah, six inches off, if you stay an inch, six inches off, then that does not give the prop- the neighboring property on your.
I just know we've had some issues in the past with neighbors over minute details. Alright, any more discussion on fences and walls? Hearing none, I will take a motion on the matter. Yes, do I hear a second? Alright, all those in favor? Those against, motion passes unanimously. Alright, number five, discussion and informational items. Anyone got any discussion other than our next regular meeting to be held on November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five at five forty-five PM?
As of right now, we have one um zoning map amendment, um that we do have a little bit more time. But we at least have one item on the agenda.
Alright, I would like to just bring up something that was brought to me by a council member. They wanted to know joint planning commission's thoughts on it and this is entirely no, nothing that they're going to make a move on. They were just curious our thoughts on moving the R two minimum from one acre to two acres. And I know that would create a back, a burden of grandfathering for staff.
I think your.
I think, I, what I.
I think your county, um fellow county residents are gonna fight that.
Well, I, I mentioned to them and that's why I was gonna share.
Just personal, not staff related, that's personal.
Yeah, I think the other, the option would be if they wanted to do something with more minimum, they create a new zoning district. And then have that as a option for landowners and possibly look at creating a one-year low-cost swap over. For that rather than just changing R two. Is that, you know, kinda how everyone as a whole would feel about that or would you rather see?
I'd rather leave it like it is, same.
Yeah. So everyone wants to keep it the same?
Go to a half acre.
Go to a half.
Go the other way.
But we already have those. Alright, hearing none, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Second, my Mr. Bowlin, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously, we are adjourned.